Legal notice was hereby given of the special meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons for the city of Bastrop this Thursday, October 15th, 2020, at 5:30 PM in the courtroom at City Hall. First, we're going to have our call to order, I mean, this is our call to order, rather. Invocation, we're going to ask Councilman Shaw to lead us with the invocation. We're going to pause for a moment of silence for those who are grieving and going through so much during these trying days. And then I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Prater, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Shall we stand?
Let's have a moment of silence. I have a father who comes to you like heavy hearts with all that we're having to deal with, Lord, day to day, but we're so thankful that no one has lost their life that we know of, and we're appreciative of everybody's input, all the work that's being done, all the first responders and essential workers and everything, Lord. We just pray for you to continue to protect them as they go through this process. Lord, we honor and give you praise for all you do for us, and we love you, and in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Goldman, roll call, please.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Prater?
Here.
Mr. La?
Here.
Ms. Moore?
Here.
May we have a call? Mr. Green is not present at this moment.
This meeting is now in session. We're going to do an announcement, we're going to do a reading of an announcement as required. We have a timeline. As you know, we are attempting to settle a longstanding issue with 32 of our finest, some have fallen, some are ill, and some are... Would you tell him, I'm the mayor?
Uh huh.
So, this is an announcement, and we're going to read it. The announcement is, notice is hereby given in accordance with Section 19.1 of Title 42 of the Louisiana Revised Statutes of 1950, as amended, that the mayor and board of all the men of the city of Bastrop, state of Louisiana, acting as the governing authority, the governing authority in parentheses, of the city of Bastrop, state of Louisiana, the city, at its regularly scheduled meeting of November 12th, 2020, at its regular meeting place, City Hall 202 East Jefferson Street, Bastrop, Louisiana, at 6:00 PM, will discuss and consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling an election to authorize a 10-year three-mill, and let me specify that the millage does not have to be, but this was the legal notice, and the millage does not have to be stated in this meeting. We're all clear on that? Because it's going to be different than three, it's going to be less than three for sure, much less, so...
I think if we work through it, you know, now that we know we have got to do it tonight, we don't vote tonight.
No, no.
We'll vote next meeting.
Yeah, but, let me continue, let me, yeah, but the, yeah, this is a reading. We didn't have to specify a millage at all by law, but since this was the public notice, we're going to read it as is, but please note it's going to be substantially less than that. Mill property tax, which will be used for the purpose of providing additional support to the city of Bastrop Fire Department, and upon approval by the qualified voters therein, for the anticipated avails of such tax to be rendered into bonds for such purpose. So that's the reading. Do we have any public comments as they relate to items on the agenda? Thank you. In the form of announcement, I've got something that's not on. Just want to inform the council and the public that we continue to work with our Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality to dispose of debris. We have a temporary staging site that we had to get a permit for, and we are authorization for emergency debris site on Camell Street and Marouge Road landfill, I have here in my hand. We are activating, officially activating those sites, and I wanted the council to know the first was to get the permits, we got the permits, and then to activate so we can take action. And we're going to be moving debris from the Camell Street as fast as possible, and we're waiting on, the governor did apply, I mean, he did ask for a declaration that would authorize FEMA support for us because of Delta. And we're fighting hard to be included in one of the parishes that will receive, hopefully, I know we qualify and we meet the threshold, especially with Hurricane Delta, which did, more damage than, in my opinion...
Than Laura.
Than Laura.
Yeah.
Yeah. Laura set up a lot of trees, blew over a lot of trees into houses with force, and Delta came and knocked the trees over that were weakened by Laura, and they were pretty easy to fall, it seems. So we've got tremendous, hundreds of thousands of cubic yards of debris to remove from our streets and from our staging area, our five acre parking lot on Camell Street, that we want to get away from there as quick as possible. Item four, I mean, item five, revenue expense report, August 2020?
Yeah. That's what I'm sending you, right?
Yeah, it's just to be received, no actions required, is that correct, Ms. Goldman?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Appointment member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and appoint a member of the Bastrop Municipal Fire and Police...
Drop that again sometime.
An appointment of the Bastrop Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board. Those two items. We have, Ms., did we get the letter on, Ms.?
We did. We did, sir.
Okay, good. As you know, Ms. McLean, Janet McLean was serving on the civil service board, and because of her schedule, she could not make the meetings, and she was formerly on the zoning board. So I asked her to, we have a vacancy on the zoning board, and I asked her to go back to her original position if she was willing to serve, and she was. So I'm tendering the name, Ms. Janet McLean, for the zoning board. We all know Ms. McLean, she's a very capable and strong lady, and... Item seven, Ms. Pat Taylor, would you come up to the microphone, please? Yes. I, just that one, you don't have to do any speaking, I just want you to say hello to the... Let me tell you a little bit about Ms. Patricia Taylor Whaley. She's an Air Force veteran, 20-plus years. She finished what really decorated in the Air Force, she did a lot of things. She's got so many specialties and so many degrees, I think she went to, you got your degrees in New York?
Uh, yes.
Yes. She got a bachelor's, and you got a master's degree, is that correct? And I left the paper with all your credentials, it would have taken me 15 minutes to read your long resume, but she is well-founded and strong enough to deal with matters that are serious matters, and is there any councilman who would like to comment on anything between these?
Is it an active recommendation now?
Sir?
He's just going to point it at you.
Yes. Well, I just wanted to know if you all had any input, anything?
Welcome you to the... You got a lot to do.
Yes. And she's also a certified teacher, after she did so many things, she got her certification, and she taught several years.
Twenty-three and a half.
Twenty-three and a half, so that's 20 with the Air Force.
Twenty plus back, twenty going back.
Yeah, 20 and a half years, and 23 as a teacher. Well, thank you for being willing to serve, Pat. Pat, when we were talking, Pat doesn't know how long that her service will be, but I asked her to fill this seat because it's urgent, so we're going to play it by ear. She has, she's a volunteer with the Humane Society, she spends a lot of time with animals. How many cats do you have, Pat?
I don't personally have any cats, but I have four, four of them. And I take care of all of the mainly that's associated with the Humane Society.
Animals, Humane Society. Well, thank you so much, and God bless you. We grew up together, I mean, I'm a lot older than Pat, but we grew up together, and I've known her since she was 14, at least 14, 15 years old. But thank you so much, Pat, and thank you for being willing to serve.
May I need a motion?
Oh, I need a motion. Can we couple both of those, or you want to do them separate?
Separate.
Separate. Item six, Ms. McLean.
May I move to, may we accept Ms. McLean as a member of the...
A second.
It's been moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Council Lady Moore, that this appointment be approved? Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The ayes have it, the appointment is confirmed.
Now, I move that we have a point, uh, to prepare to apply 2034.
Yes, sir. Been moved again by Councilman Locke, and seconded by Councilman Mayor Pro Tem Prater, that this appointment be confirmed. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the appointment's made. Thank you so much, lady and gentleman. Item Patricia Taylor Whaley.
I have a question.
Okay. Item eight, executive session regarding ongoing litigation, Arnold Loether et al. versus the city of Bastrop civil suit number 2008-333. Do we have a, do we need a motion for that, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, sir.
To go into executive session?
Yes, sir.
It's been moved by Councilman Shaw, seconded by Councilman Green, that we go into executive session. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We are in executive session.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Present.
Ms. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Prater?
Here.
Mr. La? May all present, and we have a call.
This meeting's in session. I'd like to thank our council for a very productive session, and thank the council for their input. Item nine. Lady and gentlemen, we have permits to operate and dispose of hundreds of thousands of cubic yards of debris. We expect to get a designation from FEMA, we're seeking a category-one designation. We have a category-B with Hurricane Laura. On the category-B, we were able to get public assistance, the public assistance designation, which pays, I believe, 75% of the cost, or something of that nature, of what we incur. And I don't want to get into the details of that, but it wasn't full, and we were seeking, and still with the cooperation of Mr. James Modest and Sheriff, he's the Homeland Security head for Mohawas Parish, the Mohawas Parish Sheriff's Department, and Sheriff Tubbs, and they've been working with us, and we're trying to get that designation, and I believe that we were right on the brink of showing and proving that we had the debris from Laura. But as we've discussed, Hurricane Delta came and knocked down even more trees than Laura did, and devastated homes. I've seen homes with 15 wide foot gaps with two trees, and Robert, in your neighborhood, over on Orion, and on other streets, yeah.
Orion was probably our worst.
Worst, yeah. And, but anyway, we're seeking category-A with debris removal where FEMA will pay for debris. Some cities contracted, some cities, like Hurricane Harvey in Houston, they brought in contractors to contract. I believe that, and we met with the National Guard when Hurricane Laura hit, one day after we met with the National Guard out of Bastrop and Monroe, the 528th Engineering Battalion, and they were commissioned to help us with debris removal. So we geared toward them assisting, and the next day, we received word that they had been called to South Louisiana because of the horrific devastation down there, which leveled things. And so we were on our own. We haven't received one penny for all the hours that Public Works has been out there removing trees and opening roads and things like that. So the work that we have ahead for our Public Works Department is insurmountable. The debris removal alone, removing all the debris from the garment plant parking lot, which is a staging site, to the landfill, is going to be a real arduous task, but I mean, we put it there so we know how much is there, so we know that we can remove it. And the reason that we put it there is because that was the only hard surface that the city of Bastrop had control of. Everywhere else was muddy, and it would have been a muddy mess getting in and out, we couldn't get in and out of anywhere that we controlled. So I made the decision, and I take full responsibility for putting it the only place that we could, and that's only garment plant. But that was no trash, some people did dump some trash, that was, and some couches, that we removed some of that stuff, got rid of it. But you know, people will be people and do things that's convenient for them and not for the greater good of the community. So we've got to, but we're going to get paid, if the city of Bastrop does it, we're going to get paid for it, we're going to compensate it. I can, if any of you want to know what that compensation, what's allowable for FEMA, but I don't project that we'll lose any money, in fact, I project that we'll probably get paid, if we work something out with FEMA, so much per cubic yard, we'll probably benefit. I mean, some cities, like Monroe, really benefited from Katrina. They had probably less money in their reserve and their fund balance than the city of Bastrop. Yes, ma'am?
Well, I have a question, so are we talking about item nine or item 10?
No, no, I'm not talking about, hold it, wait a minute. I'm setting up to talk about the first item, okay?
You said hurricane, so...
Yeah, well, no, let me, I'm glad you asked. What I was saying was that if our Public Works Department is commissioned with the task of moving the debris, right? We're limited to the number of employees that we have. The burn curtain is the next item, item 10. But I want you to understand that we don't have an army of employees, and we're going to be burning, if you approve the burn curtain, we're going to be officially burning, but it's going to take months to get it all done.
Okay, so what number nine got to do with number 10?
That's a good question, what does number nine have to do with number 10? We're talking about the stress on Public Works Department. We don't get policemen, we don't get firemen out there to burn this debris and to move it.
So number nine is the ball field.
Yes, I'm saying, if we have a lift, other communities played ball this year, West Monroe, Ruston, they had tournaments this year. We err on the side of caution, if we erred at all, because it wasn't the right thing, in my opinion, too, because people were not observing the recommendations of the White House to mask up, and people were not observing that, so we didn't have it. But I anticipate that we will probably, if things go good in the spring, be ready for sports.
So, the parks will be open in the spring?
Diddy, I'm hoping that we can open them, that all depends on what COVID-19 is doing, okay? If it's bad, but if things are good and people mitigate by masking, social distance, washing hands, and, you know, being careful, then good things will happen. But go ahead, ask your question. Yes, sir.
With this laser later, it only work on Thursday?
Yeah, it does, it's got implements that will do...
Some of our fields that cover the grass, this machine...
Yeah, yeah, we can remove grass, it removes...
In order to see it work properly, you have to remove the grass, and it's like a rake, don't mistake it.
No.
When we play, we raise it.
It's, it has, it has 10 implements, depending on what you want to do. You've got teeth that you can get the grass up, you can de-grass a field, you've got grader, and it automatically adjusts, you can operate it mindful, and one person can do it. And Ms. Moore, that's the point that I'm making, if we have 10 people out burning debris, we need to get the ball fields where they'll drain properly now. We do the ball fields in the wintertime, when the grass dies, we take those people who were cutting grass and doing that kind of stuff, and we get the ball fields kind of ready, so it won't be so far in the spring, because when April...
We need to take care of the here and now right now, this debris.
Wait, go ahead.
I mean, I can't go outside my door.
Ms. Moore, do you have the numbers for the lease?
This debris gun.
Do you have the numbers for the...
I have a copy of the packet.
That's right.
Just approve this curtain gun.
Wait, hold it, let me, let...
The community right now is thinking that we are the...
We can do both?
No, we don't need both, in my opinion.
Why? You know, well, the mayor is asking for it.
Ball field season coming, it's time to ball.
Ms. Moore, when ball season comes, when ball season comes...
I don't do that.
Wait a minute.
I don't do that.
God, damn.
I guess my...
Okay, Mr. Green, you played baseball, right?
Right.
Have you played on good fields and bad fields?
Right.
Tell me your feeling when you played on a bad field and you had to try to steal second base, what happened?
Well, you know, the dirt is water, you know, it's a little cause, and you can't slide.
Did you ever feel danger when you played baseball on some fields, I mean, on some fields?
No.
I've played, felt I wouldn't slide in second base.
You might not slide, I'm scared.
That's what I'm talking about, danger and sliding and hurting yourself.
You're only, you're only, and you're going to...
Yeah.
But what I'm asking, how long do it take for this machine to prepare a field? Like, if you want to put it on a long field, how long does it take to prepare it?
Naturally, the answer, that's a great question, how long does it take to prepare a field? Ms. Moore, did you watch the video that I sent you?
I did, but I'm right now worried about the limbs.
We're going to do the limbs, that's the limbs...
The whole community is concerned.
Ms. Moore, we can walk and chew bubble gum at the same time.
Yes, I understand.
The laser grazer is chewing bubble gum, during the other, we can walk.
Take care of this curtain burner right now.
Ms. Moore, that's your, you have a vote, but let's just talk about this for a second. What we can do, Mr. Green, and you're asking some very good questions, what this will allow us is one person, instead of six people out there, and it takes six people, and sometimes prisoners, you've been there, either I'm lying or I'm not lying, so if you shake your head...
What I'm just saying, I, you know, we got a lot of plans, we got...
And we can do this. Mr. Pro...
We got, we're, right now, we cannot touch these cemeteries, our cemeteries are in bad shape.
No, no, they're not, we just did, we just did them last week.
Bad shape, I had to pay somebody to...
When?
My husband's grave.
When?
About four weeks ago.
That's right, and three weeks ago, let's talk about that. Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Lenore, you got to be seen, though, go to the, yes.
I'm talking about the great boys in the cemetery, and which they are, and they're not as bad, we have four people now, they need to go by...
Memorial, no, no, St. Joseph.
No, one off of Camell.
H.V. Adams.
H.V. Adams, yeah.
It really looks good, there's four people that are moving from cemetery to cemetery, and they're doing one at a time, and when they finish, you have to go back, you need to drive by H.V. Adams.
Is any city important?
No, well, no, no, let me explain, let me explain it, please, stay there, Ms. Moore, Ms. Lenore. In February of this year, we've always used, you see the red van, have you ever seen a red van with Moors and stuff on the back, weed eaters? Well, the red van is what hauled the inmates around. We've always, from Mayor Hawkins' days, had trustees, people who were not considered a danger, nonviolent, we've always paid them to come and work, and their job was to ride in that red van, and you'd see it at Memorial, you'd see it at H.V. Adams, you'd see it up here at St. Joseph, you'd see it at Christ Church Cemetery, those are the four cemeteries we do. Ms. Moore, in February, when COVID hit, it hit the prisons, they locked them down, we couldn't get workers until two weeks ago, okay? We had record rain, did you water your lawn this year at all?
No.
Did you need to water it?
No.
You know why? Because we had record rains. And just like we had record rains, if you have, you have someone else do your yard?
Yes.
Okay. Is it a relative, or is it free or paid?
It's paid.
Okay, paid. Be truthful with me. Wasn't they glad and smiling because they had to come to you every other week, basically?
Exactly, that's their income.
That's right, that's their income, but mine was happy, because it rained so much, we had, the average rain in August is about 2.0, in Monroe, it's 3.5, 3 and 1/2 inches. Carl Doyle Nelson at the water company, they have a rain gauge up there, you'll find that in one day in August, we had a four-inch rain, which is more than a month's worth in a two-hour period. We've had more rain this year than any year that I can remember. Normally, grass is dead, and we can stop weed eating around July and August, grass grows a little bit, and you have to sprinkle it. We have farmers in Mohawas Parish, Mr. Prater would know this, that didn't irrigate this year, they didn't have to pump thousands and millions of gallons of water in their corn crops because, God bless them, with rain this year. Well, to our detriment, we had prisoners locked up that we couldn't get, okay? And we also had rain that would grow grass six, eight, 10 inches in a week. So that's what Bastrop, that's what compounded the problem with the cemeteries. We didn't have the workers because they were locked up and couldn't come. So three weeks ago, the sheriff gave us, they gave us, and first of all, we had prison reform, which released a lot of nonviolent workers about a year and a half ago, starting a year and a half ago, we had a lot of people released. Those were the most nonviolent people who got released from prison. So of the ones that left, the sheriff has contracts with other, like DG Foods and other places, they had to fill those contracts, but they had to shut down. We couldn't get workers, it was not a reflection on our Public Works Department, because this was out of the norm. So is that clear about the cemeteries, what happened? So three weeks ago, we signed a contract to hire how many, Ms. ... So three weeks ago, we signed a contract to hire, how many, Ms. Goldman?
Four.
Four. And those four now are being ridden around. And all of the cemeteries, I believe, Ms. Lenore, have we gotten them all yet?
Yes, they just have one, they haven't finished up.
Yeah. If you want to know what people think that understand and know, go to Bastrop Feed and Seed and ask Mr. Petrus about the work that he commended, the Public Works Department. They, we had an oak tree fall, split in half and fall, and decimate graves in St. Joseph Cemetery by Bastrop Foods. We had the State Attorney General, I contacted Attorney General because they have a fund to restore graves and that. We worked with the Attorney General. Even though our crew went in there, and I've got it on video, I will file it, I will post it tonight. But our Public Works Department is strapped, and they're stretched to the limit. Burning debris is going to stretch them further. And if you don't give us this machine, you're going to throw this administration's winter work schedule totally off because we've got to burn hundreds of thousands of cubic yards. We've got to move it, burn it, and a lot of it is still in the street. Five, six of it is still on roads, on the side of roads and ditches. Well, your point is noted, so please, I know you're ready, so you can just sit on your vote, please. I'm the mayor, I'm talking, I'm talking, I'm talk, Ms. Moore, Ms. Moore, Ms. Moore, I'm the mayor. Ms. Moore, Ms. Moore, if you've made up your mind, just kind of plug it up, please, if you will. No, I'm just saying, if you've made up your mind, you won't let me finish. Ms. Moore, Ms. Moore, the mayor's election is March the 20th. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, anyone can run, anyone can run, I welcome it. But we, how much is this, how much is it monthly? Yes, it's needed over the winter, Mr.... That's, wait. So what you're saying is, I should wait until the grass gets tall in the spring? Wait, wait, we have other things to cut grass? The machine can do, if the machine, if the fields to rehab a field, Stirlington, I mean, Ms. Moore, you have any idea what Beekman paid to do what this machine will do? I gave that out last week. Beekman? Okay, well, Beekman at the last meeting, Beekman paid fourteen thousand one hundred dollars to do one field. They haven't done it yet, they let the bit, they let the bit. If the machine is, if the field is in decent shape, it could do it in a day with one man riding with a blindfold on. Yes, and Mr. Green, that's a great question. We didn't open the swimming pool. Swimming pool costs us over forty thousand dollars a run every year. We didn't spend that money. We didn't open Dotson Park. We had two... No, no, I didn't say that. We have a master plan for parks that... The way you raise, okay, let me give you a scenario. I picked and chopped cotton. One day, there was a green, there was a green machine coming down the road on a tractor, turned backward with two things. Wait, wait, listen, listen. There were fifty of us chopping cotton, and this machine came, and we looked around, and it went down the field and picked the cotton, okay? It was called a cotton picker. It replaced fifty of us Negroes who were joining the field. And it went and it picked all the cotton. We were lucky because it didn't do a good job. It left some cotton in the field, and we called that scrapping. So we were paid a higher rate to go and scrap a hundred pounds than when the boulders were thick. So this is the equivalent of a farmer getting a cotton picker, rather than having fifty people with shovels and rakes. Okay, what we have, what, Mr. Green, Mr. Green, haven't you seen people work on the ball field? That's right. How many, how many people? A lot of them. The whole team would be out there doing this, wouldn't they? Right. Mr. Green, I mean, Mr. Green, Mr. Green. That depends on COVID. That depends on, that depends on COVID. If COVID, wait, but what you're doing is you're putting this administration in a mode... We'll always have it, never use. COVID's going to be over. Because when the park's open, the fields will be ready. So what you're saying is, it depends on COVID, Mr. Green. If COVID is good, we're going to play ball. If we play ball, we need to be ready. It doesn't make sense to wait. We have the money, we didn't spend money in parks recreation. There's no rational, yeah.
Jesse have a baseball team, right?
Yeah. Yes, he can hold his tournament here. Yeah, we're in phase three. We're in phase three. We're in phase three, wait, look, we're in phase three, there's no reason why we can't do it now. The field's not ready. We want to take advantage to do maintenance and fix them up. We'll open them, Mr. Green, in... I will, but, but, but... What you're saying is, what you're saying is, what you're saying is, and I hate that we can't see the point. And it makes business sense to buy a cotton picker rather than having a hundred people out there with shovels and hoes. We can afford it. We didn't have two employees, we didn't run heat and air conditioning in Dotson Park, the money is there. I'll do this, I'll commit this, that we will get the parks ready, and the minute that they're ready, we can, if we're in phase three, we'll do it. If we're in phase three, we'll play ball.
I might not go, we told me to plug it, I might not.
We're, we're... Okay, if that point happens, then we'll have grass growing. You're messing up our winter, we can't do what we normally do in the wintertime. No, no, that's not true. We can do Dotson.
No, it's, Dotson not dirt.
No, we're going to get the dirt up, it gets the dirt up.
You have two fields right now that have dirt down, that's East Madison and Park Park, that we can use this machine right now. Before it's Jackson Park, Dotson Park, Forest Park, you have to pick up the grass.
That's what the machine does. It's got teeth that goes, you didn't watch the videos, Mr. Green. It's got teeth that gets... Only, only single discussion? Well, you know, Mr. Locke, I'll shut up, go ahead. Well, look it up, and I'll abide by it. That's your thinking, okay. Well, let me state, I'm going to state this, I'm going to state this. What you all are doing, I'm just putting this council on notice. Yeah, what you, what this council is doing is putting the administration, who is responsible for getting the work done, in a, in a real bad position. Not, this is, I'm the air, and I'm talking about what it's doing to us, okay? It's putting us, who have to get Mr. Gray and get Mr. Jesse and our Parks and Recreation Department, we have five people now, we had fourteen in 2017, okay? In parks, all right? Now, I'm saying, give us a cotton picker. Don't send us out there like an Angola chain gang with all shovels and trying to eyeball this because this, this will do. Okay, so that's... As soon as we get them, get the machine and get them ready. But we're not playing on unsafe fields, so when... Mr. Locke, we're getting paid to be here. They weren't the safest, they could be better. Well, I'm not going to get a motion out of this council.
Well, I make a motion.
No, that...
I make a motion that we approve number...
We haven't gotten a ten yet. I said, I was explaining, I was explaining the need for it. I was justifying, I was justifying the need and hoping that people were open-minded, and I see this council is not open-minded nor rational. So, so, okay, so let's... Number nine, do we have enough motion number nine? If we don't, it dies for lack of motion. Okay, it died, Mr.... Item ten, discussion action, permission to purchase an MG, I mean, M-25G curtain destructor so that we can efficiently burn the debris that this administration has applied to the Department of Environmental Quality to get rid of the debris in this town so people can get their lives back to normal. It's been moved by Councilwoman Lady Moore, seconded by Councilman Locke, that we purchase it. Any discussion? It's about fifty, yeah, it's about fifty. You know, it might run a tad, you know, but it's in that range. Okay, all the ayes have it. Thank you for your positive vote on that recommendation from this administration. Is that, do we have a motion to adjourn? It's been moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Councilman Shaw. Meeting's adjourned.